Good morning. This is the July 19, 2021 work session for the Montrose City Council. We'll start off this morning with introduction of some new employees. Terry Wilcox. Will you introduce them?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Shani Wittenberg is the first one to do introductions and I'm wondering if she is on the internet. All right, well, I will start with Brenna Kent. Brenna Kent is our new customer service technician. She is a family member. Her spouse is a police officer, so we are very happy to have her and I'm going to invite her up to introduce herself.
Thank you, Terry. My name is Brenna Kent. As Terry mentioned, I did hear about this position at the city from my husband Jimmy Kent, who's a police officer. I'm really excited to be here and work as a community member that really and just really intrigues me. I used to work at a title company. We've been in Montrose for just over two years now. Before Montrose, I lived in Grand Junction for a good part of my life, but I am originally from Boise, Idaho, so pretty similar sort of, I would say, you know, geographical environment. It's all feels home to me. Love living on the Western slope. I can't imagine going anywhere else. Oh, hi, Shani. Do you want to say anything?
I just wanted to say that we are very excited to have Brenna and she's a welcome addition to the front lobby. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. I don't have a lot of formal education. I spent one year in Boulder at the University of Colorado in Boulder. And from there, I, you know, tried out a couple different industries and just find myself drawn to customer service and engaging with the community. So overall, I'm glad to be here and I love what the Western slope has to bring for outdoor lifestyle. Thank you so much.
Welcome, and we won't hold it against you that you spent time in Boulder.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really try to limit how many people know that, but.
I lived in that area for a few years myself.
Really? It's a whole different world over there.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to present today Bridget Clarkson. She's our, will be one of our new police officers. She's actually from Grand Junction, but also worked here at the Montrose County Communication Center before we merged. And then we hired her from actually the Grand Junction Dispatch Communication Center. Just a little caveat and then I'll let her introduce herself a little further. She is kind of our test program for hiring a non-certified peace officer, training them early. We're still working out some of those kinks. And then hopefully, and then after she goes to the academy graduates, we can shorten the training time on the back end because she will already record your records and evidence, those kinds of things. And get someone on the street faster even though we don't have direct access to an academy. So with that.
Thank you. Well, I'm Bridget Clarkson and I actually grew up here, graduated high school here in Montrose. And from there, spent a little bit of time in the military, a few years, and then college back in Detroit, Michigan. So I was there for nearly 10 years, had my daughter there, and that's when I decided I'd rather be home and came back. Like Chief had mentioned, I worked in dispatch for Montrose County for many years. And then went from there just prior to West Co., the implementation of West Co. Went to Grand Junction. Have been working for Grand Junction PD in dispatch for three years and have decided to take on this endeavor on the other side of the radio and also closer to home. I love this community. Obviously, I keep coming back. So I'm excited. I'm excited for this opportunity and this pre-academy trial phase has been fantastic. I've got a little bit of knowledge from the dispatch side. It's been really nice to kind of put together a few other pieces, spending some time, like he mentioned, records, evidence, even in the courtroom. Just trying to fill in some gaps that hopefully I can get pre-academy. I think it will make it smoother overall in the end. So I'm really excited to be here.
Great. Welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Jim Scheid will introduce the Public Works workers.
Hello. Tyler and Ryan are both our newest Street Division workers. And I'll let them tell you more about themselves, but all I know is the Streets Division is excited to have them and they're probably hurting without them right now. So all with that, I'll let Tyler go ahead and go first and then Ryan.
I'm Tyler. I was born and raised up in Kelowna. I spent a lot of time here. Really excited to get to work in for my community and give back to them. Before this, I did a lot of construction, new remodels. I'm just really thankful for the opportunity to work here.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ryan Webb. I was originally born and raised here in Montrose, graduated high school here. Previous to working here at the city now, I was in retail, did about 12 years. That was definitely a different experience compared to working out and about now, but it's, it's been a nice change. Definitely happy to be back into the area. Previously, I was living in Wisconsin for the last six years and just way too flat for my liking, so. Needed to get back and looking forward to getting back to an area that, you know, I definitely spent a lot of time and gotten into some trouble at times. But definitely happy to be here and it's a pleasure and I appreciate it.
Thank you and welcome, guys.
And before we go, I just wanted to let you know that Judge Greenacre had something come up and he will be introduced next month.
All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is the mobile home park permit application and proposed city financial contributions. And Morgantile.
Okay, good morning. I have a presentation up because I don't want to forget to bring it up for Rich Dana, who's the applicant. So I'll be sharing some information with you and then Mr. Dana is here as well and he will share more detailed information about the application. But typically, I don't present land use applications to you. Usually, our planning division does, and I wanted to explain why that is this time. So last year during COVID, as we were all experiencing a lot of transitions and our planning department was experiencing transitions, Mr. Dana called us and he was looking into purchasing three mobile home parks and I just happened to start working with him. It was last June, so it's been over a year that we've been working with Mr. Dana and his team on this application. And because I started, I continued working even though our police department has been working with Mr. Dana, engineers, planning department, most of our divisions have worked on this application. So I'm here to share information with you today in general. And it's just been a pleasure to work with him and we've made a lot of progress over the last year. So the goal of today is to share big picture, general information with you about this mobile home park application that affects three mobile home parks. And you will hear all of the code compliance criteria and all of those details at a future council meeting where you will actually vote on that application. It went to Planning Commission and then the next step is to go to City Council, like most planning applications. But this is a really big one, and so we wanted to give you an overview of it before you consider it at the City Council meeting. Also, it is very big in magnitude and financial investment on behalf of the applicant. And the applicant is requesting that you consider partnering financially on this project, which will clean up blight and make for safer living environment for many residents. So I'll run through information and I'm trying to save some time for the applicant to be able to really explain to you as well. But as an overview, like I said, it's really kind of two components. One, mobile home park permits. And second is this request for you to consider contributing financially to the project. Mobile home park permits are outlined in our city code. And all mobile home parks in the city of Montrose are meant to have a mobile home park permit before they're constructed. These regulations were put into place in the seventies in our city code. But the mobile home parks that were in existence prior to the seventies were built and don't have mobile home park permits yet. And they have continued to operate, which has been legal. They're essentially non-conforming. But the city stance when those mobile home park owners have come to us and asked if they could add new mobile homes to their parks, the city stance has been you need a mobile home park permit first that outlines the regulations and the guidelines that these mobile home parks will operate within and comply with. And until working with Mr. Dana in my three years here, every potential owner has walked away and decided that that was too much work or too much burden or perhaps too much investment because especially in these three mobile home parks, it requires a lot of infrastructure upgrades in order for the city to feel comfortable with adding new mobile home parks to the park. So this mobile home park permit that Mr. Dana has applied for, for each of the three parks, Cottonwood, San Juan and Green Acres, will allow for him to, in the end, remove dilapidated and uninhabitable mobile homes and replace them as well as put in additional new mobile homes. Anybody could remove dilapidated mobile homes right now without a mobile home park permit, but it's expensive and without the mobile home park permit, owners cannot replace. And so there's less of an incentive, as you can understand, to invest in removing all of those mobile homes without the opportunity to bring new ones in. So Mr. Dana is proposing to make significant improvements in these mobile home parks as part of this application. They're outlined in the packet in your memo, but they include new water and new sewer in all three mobile home parks. They include new infrastructure like fire hydrants and streetlights, widening access so that police and other emergency vehicles can get in and out of the mobile home park safely, but also turn around, see what's going on. I mentioned removing the mobile homes, but that is a big part of this. There are 44, if I'm not mistaken, mobile homes that are uninhabitable right now that are in the mobile home parks and are an attractive nuisance. Bad things are happening in those mobile homes. So those would be removed. And then new parks, lots of other things that I think Mr. Dana will outline. But in the end, also, Mr. Dana will be able to bring in new mobile homes, which will create additional living units in our community, which provides for a different type of housing option that's much needed in Montrose and will create a safer environment for current residents, future residents. And also, we heard one member of the public speak a few weeks ago who was talking about this application, but came at the wrong time. Neighbors of these parks are very interested in this as well because it has an impact on the neighborhood when there's this type of blight in the neighborhood. So we as staff feel like this is a huge improvement to these mobile home parks, to the neighboring communities and really our entire community as a whole. Mr. Dana is investing. He submitted bids to us that he's received from contractors for all of the work that he's doing. So he's received actual bids. We've reviewed them. He's investing over $4.1 million in this entire project and has proposed a contribution from the city of $250,000 overall. Like anything that the city partners on that's similar to this, staff is proposing that if City Council would like to contribute to help make sure that this improvement happens in our community, that that would be a reimbursement or payment to a contractor for the work that is done. And one of the options is to pay for asbestos removal, which is something the city's done before in an attempt to clean up blight and ensure that buildings can really usually go into adaptive reuse. But this is focused primarily this time on removing blight. And the application right now proposes that there's $419,000 of asbestos removal that needs to be done in these parks. So $250,000 could go towards that effort. $250,000, if this project costs $4.1 million, would be about 6% of total project costs. In the past, the city has contributed a range of percentages, but they've usually been higher, you know, more in the range, I think of like seven to 12%, even higher. So we felt that that $250,000 was in line with what the city has done before with projects to abate asbestos. And again, this wouldn't even really abate all of it. There is also some other project costs if the city wanted to contribute in a different way that the city could consider. Mr. Russo, I think I saw maybe you're getting ready to ask a question. Okay. Really, then the one final thing that I wanted to mention and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that this is a very big overview, but like I said, code criteria we'll get into later at the City Council meeting. But City Council could use the money. The $250,000 is not budgeted because we didn't know if this application really would move forward and if so, what the cost would be. So we didn't propose any budget to you for 2021. But you could use general fund, undesignated fund balance if you desire. Also, another option would be TIF funding from the former DDA because this project to remove asbestos in an effort to remove blighted mobile homes would be consistent with those DDA funds. It would remove blight from the downtown area and we have about $700,000 of DDA funding available left over that you could use for that purpose.
And one of the things I'd like to point out is that we have established a precedent in asbestos removal because of the public safety and health for our community and that we do support that can pretty consistently across the board. And I think that that is a, I would like to have us explore that option a little bit more thoroughly because I think that is a good use of our funds to make sure that our community isn't being exposed to materials during the demolition of those trailers.
Sure. And thank you for that comment. It's also expensive and we've known that it can be a burden to people who are looking to reuse a building or like in this case, remove structures that have asbestos in them. It can be expensive and a burden. So the city's been able to partner to help those processes go forward.
On the DDA funds, is that still within the zone that was originally set up for that or is that going to be any kind of an obstacle for us?
The TIF funds that were focused on downtown improvement specifically, so actually in the the former plan of development, when we had the DDA going, cleaning up the mobile home parks located within the heart of downtown was in that, that plan. So it would meet all the original intent.
That being said, I picture that money being used for more of our retail downtown locations and would be more supportive of using undesignated general fund money personally for this project.
Did have two questions, actually. And the first one, you said there's 44 units that need to be removed. I'm just curious, how many total units are on the properties right now?
Sure, I'll look that up so I can get that information to you. Mr. Dana might know it as well.
Thank you. And the, and the other question is with the water and sewer upgrades and changes, that's currently owned by the, by the mobile home park, correct?
Yes, thank you. That's a great clarification. So these mobile home parks are private parcels. And each mobile home park is one parcel. And the mobile homes that are located on the parcels are individual spaces, but they're not conveyable lots. So there are many, all of the mobile homes on Cottonwood are on one lot essentially. And so they're not conveyable and some of those mobile homes are owned by the person who lives in them. There are times when the mobile home park owns units and leases them out. And then the infrastructure, like the water and sewer on those lots are private infrastructure. So the water and sewer connect in to our city main. But it's essentially its own private system and unfortunately, over the years, they have not been maintained well. And because it's private infrastructure, the city's oversight has been limited. And that has been a significant challenge to figure out how to, as the city, partner with owners of these mobile home parks who may or may not be interested in investing in that type of infrastructure that's essential to the welfare of residents without also perhaps forcing residents to move out. And in a housing climate like this, that is the last thing that any of us want is for residents to move out. And to that end, I'll just also mention that Mr. Dana is well aware of that and through his mobile home park application has on his own committed to keeping the lot rent stable for current residents for two years. So new residents who move in during that time period might see a different lot rent than they'd see today if they were a current resident. But those current residents, as they undergo a construction zone around them and water and sewers being installed, their lot rent will stay stable.
Are the homes individually metered or are they not individually metered? And that's what it means to be on a private system?
Yes, correct. Yep.
So the, excuse me. Forty-four units would be removed and replaced?
Over time, yes. And the way that we are proposing the development agreement is that all of the infrastructure improvements, including the removal of all of the dilapidated mobile homes uninhabitable, installation of water and sewer, widening of the roads, everything except for essentially the paving of the roads, because that will come last, must be completed before any new mobile homes can be installed.
And then if, over time, replacing the 44 and then how many new additional units beyond the 44?
Yeah, so.
On page six of our packet, it has all of that information pretty much delineated. For each unit, A, B, and C tells you for each park what the units replaced, maximum number and total removals are.
Yes, and I think Mr. Dana might know that information like the back of his hand and so he can go over it too.
In terms of big picture, I really like that we have a potential buyer or already bought the parks that is willing and wants to invest in them. Because I think that's been a hard part in the past when owners haven't wanted to and it limits the city's ability to do anything. And I think that a nice presentable mobile home park would be a great option in the array of housing that's available to our citizens. And I'd like to hear more from him about keeping it as an affordable option within our community when these improvements are done. But at the same time, making a place that's safe and nice for residents.
Thank you. And through the application, as I mentioned, and if you'd like to dive in it today, we certainly can, but I think as, you know, Mr. Reed was starting to get to, there are conditions that would be applied to any development agreement and the mobile home park permit to ensure that this work is completed over a period of time and that the applicant is not able to install new mobile homes while the water and sewer, for example, isn't functioning well. Because the goal is to get all of this work completed in a timely manner and also ensure that these mobile home parks continue to be operated in a safe and livable way in perpetuity, best that we can. So those types of conditions are included in the mobile home park permit approval process.
The other thing I'm very pleased to see on here is because one of our big concerns is public safety and welfare is that increase in lights and the paving of the streets. I think that is a very, very valuable addition. It's going to increase the quality of the occupants there and the quality of life of the occupants there.
This might be a better question for, for Mr. Dana, but I noticed that he is the contract purchaser, which, so I assume there are still conditions to closing before.
That's my understanding as well. And Mr. Dana can elaborate, but he is under a contract and we've received, of course, approval from the current owner to proceed with this application.
And the only last question I have for you is just, just for clarity sake.
Sure.
You mentioned that when the 44 are removed, they'll be replaced. But are, are were they actually looking to purchase those units themselves and put them in and rent them? Or are they looking for people to rent the lot and then purchase their own mobile home?
My understanding is a combination. So the 44 would be removed and then replaced. And then there are even within each additional park, some more units that will come in in some cases. And Mr. Dana and I were talking last week and I think he's open to a lot of different options. He understands even that some companies in town are struggling to find housing for employees. And it seems possible that a company might desire to purchase a mobile home and site it on a leased spot and have that available for future employees. And it sounds like Mr. Dana is very open to that as well as perhaps his company purchasing and citing mobile homes or making those spaces available for people who are interested in buying their own mobile home and locating it on the space.
And do they have to remove the asbestos before removing those 44 units or can they be taken somewhere else?
My understanding is it happens onsite. So I think it's all part of the process that as you're pulling apart these mobile homes and getting ready to move them, you have to deal with all of the contaminated material. And I'll mention too that some drug use has happened in some of the mobile homes and Mr. Dana has been thorough about investigating that. And those units, of course, are not habitable either right now. And so that requires some additional, you know, environmental remediation due to drug use in those units.
Any other questions, Van? Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Dana, you will come up to the microphone and just let me know when you want me to click through.
Hi. My name is Rich Dana. I'm the applicant. Couple, couple of clarifications. I have not, I have not closed on the property yet. There still are conditions. Part of the conditions are getting final approval from the city, the concession from the city. Beyond that, we're, we're pretty much there. So it's, my hope would be that if I get through the approval on the third of August, which is the next scheduled time where the vote is, is that we would close not too long after that and begin the work right away. The number of units there are going to be demolished and we'll get into this a little bit further down. The presentation are actually more substantial than just the trailers. There's also some fixed units that we're also going to demolish. So with that, do I have to state my name and address again? I'm not sure you're going to like it. I am from Boulder, but please don't hold that against me. I grew up there, so. Is he just razzing me? Okay, it's a, yeah, I could tell you some jokes after, after this, if you want about Boulder. So there are, there's three parks here. There's the Cottonwood, which is off, off Locust. I'm sure you're all familiar with the locations, but the Cottonwood Park is about 15 acres. And then down, of course, off of San Juan Boulevard, we have, looking at the slide, we have on the, on the left, Green Acres and on the right, San Juan. Kind of look at those as one park, about eight acres combined. We kind of just refer to it as San Juan Green Acres. Okay. We've gone through and mapped both parks or all three parks in gold. Those are pads that are currently occupied. The red pads are vacated and the green or kind of teal color. Those are existing trailers that are vacant and in various states of disrepair. In the Cottonwood Park, there are two fixed stick-built, single-family homes on the front of the park right along Locust. One is occupied, one's in need of repair. And then you'll note there's two purple pads down there off E Street or E Road that are proposed new pads that we would install in this park. Next slide, please. This is San Juan Green Acres. Green Acres is at the top. San Juan is, is down below. The color coding is the same. The gold are occupied. The red are vacant and the teal are vacated trailers in various states of disrepair. One thing, when you drive down San Juan, you'll notice that there's, there's a couple stick-built units on V Road. There's two buildings that look like an old motel beyond any state of repair. There, we're not sure there was even a foundation under one of them. And, and then there's two cottages along U Road that are also beyond repair and those, those would also come down. So that's those units right there in front are a total of 11 units. And then, of course, we've got some purple in there as well, which is 12. And we'll get into, I'll get into more detail on that a little bit further in the presentation. Next slide, please. So a couple opportunities. Obviously, community improvement and cleanup, better living environments for the residents. And of course, Montrose has an affordable housing dilemma at the moment. Growing up in Boulder, you know, kind of using Boulder as an example of a situation where there was extremely limited growth, a lot of growth control. And as a result, you know, the average price of a house. And as a result, you know, the average price of a house in Boulder is now 1.3 million. The median price is 1.1 million. And if you want to be in the service industry in Boulder, you live, you know, twenty-five miles away and it's still hard to live there. And so the amount of traffic coming into that community every day is, is horrible. And it's, and it's kind of sad because those people are really not part of that community anymore. So it's, so what this would do is provide Montrose with a lot more affordable housing for those folks that provide services within the community. Next slide, please. So the existing challenges within the park, Anne talked a lot about these, the original, original incoming water, original sewer line. So the water lines are galvanized piping. If you're familiar with galvanized piping, it's, it's problematic. It over time fills with sediment and minerals. And so we believe it's an inch and a half pipe that goes through most of the park that today is probably a half to an eighth of an inch. Most people downstream are not able to use their toilet or their shower. If somebody upstream is, is using their dishwasher or doing their laundry, it's, it's pretty rough. San Juan is probably the worst, but they're all pretty bad. The sewer lines are Orangeburg with if if you're familiar with Orangeburg. It's basically wrapped tar paper soaked in oil. If you're really lucky, it'll last about thirty years. And we're now fifty-five to sixty years old and it's all the original Orangeburg piping. There has been sewage that's pooled on the surface of the park in certain locations. There was even an environmental cleanup in Cottonwood. So it's been a prob, they're both a problem. Next slide, please. These are just examples of, of the roads pooling water, lots of trip and fall hazards. And frankly, just somewhat unsightly. Next slide, please. Poor emergency access, we'll go into that with some maps a little bit further down. Parking's really haphazard if you've driven down these roads. G Road in Cottonwood in particular, there are times that I have not been able to drive through that road. And, you know, and speaking with Chief Hall, I, yeah, I can't imagine getting a fire truck down there if you had an emergency or an ambulance or even a police car. There's no hydrants in the parks currently. There are hydrants on the periphery. San Juan has two or three along San Juan, but then you're getting in a thousand, twelve hundred feet, which the fire department cannot run hoses that far. So if you have a fire in the back of these parks right now, I'm not sure what you would do to put it out. So we, we basically would put hydrants in to where it would meet fire code and be within six hundred feet of every unit. The current design has them about five hundred feet from every unit. So we'd actually would be better than what the code is. And then there's very little street lighting. Again, if you've driven through these at night, there's a couple. But they're really minimal and it's, the parks are really dark, which compounded with all the vacant trailers and the transients living in the trailers, it's, it would be scary to live there being so dark and having people kind of come in and out of these trailers. And that's not to be, you know, insensitive to homeless people. It's just, this is probably not the correct housing environment for them to be living in. It's not fair to the neighbors. Next slide, please. You think I maybe cherry picked these pictures? I didn't. If we went out to the parks right now and walked through the vacant trailers, this is pretty common. This is a, these are photographs. One is from Green Acres and one's from Cottonwood. As you can see, there's a lot of homeless people living in these parks. So this is a, this is a prime example of, of what the trailers look like on the inside. So there are actually forty-seven abandoned trailers. There's two small, single-family homes and there's nine apartments. So actually, the total number of units we're going to tear down is fifty-eight in all. Okay, next slide, please. The asbestos. Well, there's actually two potential hazardous building materials. And the state of Colorado has really come down on air quality. So when you demolish trailers or anything with asbestos, you have to be extremely careful how you do it. All of the roof material in these, in these trailers have small amounts of asbestos in them. So when you take the excavator in there, it's about three swipes and the trailer's gone. It's easy. But the problem is that you create dust in the air when you do that. In addition, we have ceiling tiles and floor tiles and some components around some of the heating systems that have asbestos in them. So that all has to be dealt with before you take the excavator to the actual trailer or the fixed unit. From what we found so far, and I have about sixteen units left to test, every single one of them has asbestos in it. It's, so, you know, although I'd like to retain the right, if I find a trailer that doesn't have asbestos in it, possibly to rehab rehabilitate that one specific unit, I, I'm not real optimistic. I'm going to find that. The other hazardous material, which there's really no point testing for if they have asbestos is, is methamphetamines. As you probably know, if somebody uses or even worse cooks methamphetamines in a, in a, in a unit, it's so cost prohibitive to, to, to remediate. It's better in most cases just to tear it down. Unless it was just used, but if it was cooked, it's, it's a real problem. And of course, if I do find a unit that has no asbestos in it and it's, it's cost effective to rehabilitate it, I would still have to test for methamphetamines before I would ever let anybody live in it. My suspicion is since there's been methamphetamine use and there's, there's criminal or there's police reports of that within these parks, I, I suspect it wouldn't be safe to put anybody in these units. Talked a lot about crime. Yes, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think it's kind of sad that the least hazardous material in these trailers is going to be lead paint.
I haven't even thought about it because you're right. It's just, it's, and that'll all have to be done correctly, but you're right. I mean, you're only allowed to take out a area of lead-based paint like six by six or, you know, not much. And that is, that's absolutely true. I mean, it's, it's pretty rough. If any of you have had the opportunity to drive through these. Crime, again, you know, when you have folks that are, you know, living hand-to-mouth squatting in some of these units, obviously, they're in a situation where, you know, they're, they're doing what they can to survive, which is going to include crime and burglaries. And I'm sure Chief Hall could fill you in on some of the other situations that have occurred in these parks. But it's, you know, it's just, it's just a recipe for crime. And a lot of the police and emergency services resources have been used towards these parks. We hope to, you know, substantially reduce the amount of times the police have to come in to our parks. Next slide, please. Just examples of what they look like now. The doors and windows are ripped off and, and in, in all fairness to the seller, as, as many boards and the screws as you can do on the front doors and the windows of these units, they get back in. I mean, it's, every time I come out here, I'll see one boarded up and they've, they've ripped back into it. And I drove through San Juan last night when I got into town and the same homeless folks were living in the trailer that were there the last time I was here a few weeks ago. So it's, 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 there's no way to keep people out of them. Next slide, please. Again, more examples, a lot of graffiti, cars that don't work. Upper right corner is what I call the Cottonwood Dump, which is on the north end of the project. There's no gates to this kind of loop road. So people just drive their trucks in there and dump everything out the back. That dump is still in existence. I think we've budgeted probably thirty to forty roll-offs to get the trash out of these parks. But, you know, when somebody leaves, it's like, well, gosh, you know, why have it hauled away when I can just throw it on the back of the park? That's, that's what we've got. Next slide, please. Trees. We have a budget of about ninety-three thousand dollars for removal of trees, if you can believe that. It's a pretty bewildering number. These are just examples of what it looks like. That, those are abandoned trailers that the trees have grown up next to. And if you've driven along San Juan, I mean, there's some incredibly beautiful big trees. They're just, they're in need of substantial trimming up. They're not super safe. So we need to, we need to get those cleaned up or, or removed. I, I only have two giant cottonwoods slated for them for, you know, for that down. I'd like to save the rest of them because I think it does. You know, it, it's a nice, it's a nice aspect of these parks, especially in San Juan and Green Acres. Next slide, please. These are the existing community parks. On the left, you have Cottonwood. If you walk through the west half of it, you've got knees up to your, or weeds up to your knees. The east half of it's dirt. There's a nice swing set. It's just, I can't imagine anybody ever goes out there. There's a nice half, half-court basketball hoop too. It's just, it's just dilapidated. I even said to Anne at one point, can I, can I sell it to the city for a buck? And, you know, I'll go ahead and get it redone and then just give it, donate it to the city. I, you know, throw around all kinds of different ideas. This needs to be cleaned up. This is a real problem. On the right-hand side is the San Juan Park. It's a little better. It has a, it has a child's play structure. It's got a, a table pole. Dennis brings the ball in and he says, nobody comes to ask him to use it. He, he lives just to the right there. Again, both these parks just are dilapidated. They could be really nice. Next slide, please. So additionally, emergency services, we have exposed gas meters. There are some bollards, which are the metal concrete posts to protect the gas meters against car hits, but I know that the fire department's out there fairly regularly because somebody hit a gas meter. San Juan has the existing steel gas line. And then, of course, and I'm sure you've heard it, there's a lot of complaints from the residents within these parks. It's just, it's just a pretty tough living situation. Next slide, please. So here's what I'm proposing to do. Chief Hall was the first one to bring this to my attention. Cottonwood's on the left and you're going to see three pads that are gold. Those are currently trailer pads. Those I would permanently vacate and make access through the park. The park has relatively decent horizontal access. It has horrific vertical access. And in fact, E and F Road, you couldn't even, or you currently cannot access from the rest of the park. So we make it so there's multiple directions that the police could come from or actually in the emergency services. So that would greatly improve the traffic flow through the parks for emergency services. On the right is the San Juan Green Acres Park. There's two pads up at the north end that are in gold that I would permanently vacate to create permanent loop through those parks. And I'm also going to realign the roads a little bit because we do have areas where the cars stick out into the road and we'd make it so that there's, there's adequate parking off to the sides. Next slide, please. More off-street parking, the green, the green areas represent off-street parking that we're adding to these parks. On the left, you'll see that there's a little bit of off-street parking now. We're going to substantially increase that to eighty-five parking spaces in addition to that better traffic flow. On the right, we're going to realign the road and Green Acres down the middle have parking on the side. And off V Road, we're going to move the road three feet to the north and then add fourteen additional off-street parking spaces. Next slide, please. We're going to encourage or require tandem parking between the trailers so that cars in uncertain streets, especially G Street, cannot park in the street. G Street being probably the most problematic street within Cottonwood and where it's the most difficult to get emergency vehicles through. So there'll be tandem parking. You may have noticed that there are some trailers that have done additions, illegal additions. Some of them even livable and conditioned with heat or air conditioning. Those would not be allowed with any future trailers that are added to the park. Anne and I have discussed, well, what do we do with the existing additions? And at the moment, we've discussed just, just leaving them the way they are, certainly up for, for conversation. I, I don't, I'm not real excited about going to the existing residents and saying, hey, you have to eliminate a third of your house. But, you know, again, something for conversation, but in the future, moving forward, no, no unit will be allowed to do that. And we will absolutely enforce parking regulations. Next slide, please. Lighting, we talked about lighting. We, we currently are slated to add seventeen new overhead lights. I've talked about my discretion regarding the demolition of structures at the current moment. I think, I think they're all coming down. And then any, and Anne and I have discussed this. I have two years to tear down these trailers. The, the current plan is to do the asbestos abatement in September and start tearing down the trailers in October. And we will go fast. And there's no, from a construction perspective, there's no reason to start the water sewer line replacement until all the trailers are gone. It just makes sense. So the plan here is to tear down all the trailers. We'll probably be done with that by the end of December. Water and sewer starts right after. So even though I've given myself two years to get all this done, and of course, with the labor and material shortages right now, I hopefully don't need it, but I might. The plan is to do it much more quickly than I've proposed. Next slide, please. So this is Green Acres at the top. You'll see that I've got five pads that I'm ultimately planning on vacating permanently to at the top for the traffic loop, loop that we've previously discussed. Three additional pads in the middle of Green Acres. I'm going to create an additional pocket park there. And there's going to be a sidewalk that loops through to, to San Juan to the south. And then up front, the, the ones right along San Juan, I'm tearing out eleven units. I'm proposing eight new mobile home pads and then four new mobile home pads in the back. So basically, I'm proposing eliminating sixteen units and adding twelve back. Next slide, please. Cottonwood's not a substantial, proposing eliminating three pads for better emergency access and, and adding two new additional pads in dark blue. Next slide, please. I'd like to have the option to do tiny homes. I, I know this has become a popular housing option and something that I'd like to add. I don't, I have no idea what the market will bear for this, but it would be nice to have this option within the parks. Next slide, please. So as Anne mentioned, stable lot fees for all existing residents for at least two years. Working extensively with law enforcement and Chief Hall as well as the local DEA office and basically give them full rein to do whatever they need to do to go in there, work with them, take their suggestions, get the parks cleaned up. We're going to run a pretty tight ship and I brought the property management, the, the, my property manager along with us today for this meeting. Chris is, Chris manages about thirty-five units for me now and runs a very tight ship. And we're, we plan on running a very tight ship within these parks. And then, of course, you know, coming down to these parks and walking through the parks multiple times, I've gotten to know a lot of people. There are a lot of people there on a fixed income, they're retired. This is what they've got. And, and so, you know, the, the goal here is not to kick anybody out. The goal is not to be ruthless and just say you're all out. We've got a new plan for these. The goal is to keep everybody in there that is, you know, a productive citizen. And, you know, and just make a better living environment for them and to add new trailers that are nice and attractive to the community. So we're trying to make it a win-win for all. So if we can work with social services and find ways to help these people, we certainly will. Next slide, please. There's two structures within, within the parks we want to rehabilitate. The top one's in Cottonwood right on Locust. You've probably seen it if you've driven by, then the bottom one is adjacent to the, the main park within San Juan. Both of those are in relatively decent shape and worth saving. Next slide, please. So we talked about the park improvements, talked a little bit about the new pocket park and then updating both of those parks. I would like to do pavilions where people can gather, you know, covered under the sun. So they're not, you know, so they actually spend some time out there during the days. More trees, more landscaping, more place structures, probably some grass, although trying to conserve a little bit on water and doing some zero escaping. Next slide, please. Trimming back all the trees, we talked about my budget for that. Next slide, please. Redevelopment expenses, I, here it is. There, there we go. As you can see, we're going to spend about, capital improvements is about four point two million. This does not include the purchase price. So that's on top of that. But this is what it will take to get the parks back up to where they should be. You'll see an asterisk for one light, line item on the left and one on the right. Tree trimming and removal, we're still, we have verbal bids, but we don't have a written bid for the tree trimming and removal. And I'm still waiting for Black Hills for the cost of the actual lane of the new line. We have the trenching bid. So that eighty-seven thousand's within ballpark. I mean, at the end of the day, combined, those are under two hundred thousand dollars. So in the big scheme of things, they're not substantial. But we anticipate about four point two million dollars to be spent on these parks to get them back up to where they need to be. Next slide, please. So I don't know why it's not entirely coming through, but basically what I'm requesting from the city is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a partial cost offset for the asbestos. It's, it's a big deal. And when you tear into these trailers, you really got to be careful with the air. And it will affect the neighboring people if we don't do it right. You know, if you remember from the World Trade Center, when it fell, I mean, so many people got sick from the asbestos. And that's, you know, the state is really, really regulating it now and we have to do everything exactly by the book. You can't, you can't just turn these down and go dig a hole and stick them somewhere, put them in a hole and light them on fire. It's, it's just not safe. And so. Um, and so, you know, it's when we started this process, we thought that the redevelopment would cost us about three million in infrastructure and we're up about one point two. And so I'm taking an additional hit that I'm asking the city for a partial offset for that. Um, and uh, and that's, that's really where we're at with it. I'm not asking that the money would ever go through me either. I'd have it paid directly to the asbestos, asbestos abatement contractor. Um, next slide, please. Oh, there we go. No, it's fine. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and then these are the people that we've teamed up with. If you're, if you're wondering, you know, we, we've, I've surrounded myself with a lot of people that um, you know, specialize in the certain areas that need, need work. And so Chris, that's here is with Monument Ridge Property Management. Um, locally Mace Engineering, Able Excavation, Alpine Bank. Landmark Environmental, I've worked with for about twenty-five years doing asbestos abatement. Um, Caddis and Fresco, I joined a good man in Greenstein's, my land use attorney and my uh, my uh, development designer, architect, uh, Brian and Rachel over at Caddis. So uh, uh, both, both my real estate attorney and my developer have both been uh, and commissioners and uh, so they have a lot of real world experience as well. Um, so it's a great team that I've surrounded myself with. I'm very happy with everybody on there and uh, I think it's going to be a great project. Um, that's it. So uh, I don't know how you like to do this, if I should step here.
As well. Um, I wonder if we could bring his picture up on the screen. Herman, just bear with us one minute, please. We can see you now. Go ahead.
Great. Um, thanks, uh, City Council. I'm, I'm Harmon Zuckerman. I'm uh, Rich's land use attorney and uh, also apologies from Boulder. Um, but uh, I wanted to give you a sense also of the excellent work that your staff has done. We've had a, a really good experience working with Anne and working with Steve Alcorn and working with planning staff. Um, Miss Sharp and it's, it's just been a good partnership. Um, so thank you for that. I, I also just wanted to say one thing to clarify from Rich's presentation. Um, which I, I thought Rich really distilled the presentation down very well and uh, was extremely efficient with his time. Uh, but, but as he was doing that, um, he was mentioning tearing down uh, the structures. And when he was talking about not doing certain work like paving until he had torn down all the structures, I want to make it clear that those are only among the identified for demolition. So we're, we're not talking about a whole wholesale removal of everything in the park. So just one little correction in case anybody had a misconception. I, I wasn't sure it came across clearly and um, I'm, I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
So I think your last slide answered my first question, which was who are you and what's your experience in doing this? Um, but my next question, and you can elaborate on that. Um, but then my next question is, why Montrose? What, what, how did you find these three mobile home parks and how did you decide this was where you wanted to spend some money?
Well, um, I've done a fair amount of investing in Grand Junction and my wife has family in Montrose and Cedar Edge. And um, so we started coming down here and then another real estate broker mentioned to me, hey, you know, we've got a couple of trailer parks down there if you want to take a look at them. And uh, I, I don't think I'll ever convince my wife to move out here, but I'm working on it still. So, you know. So there's always that nice pull. The more I buy here, the more I can, can pour this way. Hopefully she's not watching.
Do you mind uh, sharing where else you own and or operate?
Sure. So Clifton, Grand Junction, uh, um, Boulder, Westminster, Denver. Um, the most uh, complex other project I did is we purchased a building in Boulder uh, near the university, uh, that was about thirty thousand feet and we ended up trying to figure out how to uh, develop the first high-end student rentals in Boulder and we actually hung the building by girders that we couldn't even manufacture in the U S and we hung the entire building and did underground parking. Um, was it, Boulder's tough to do any sort of redevelopment in. And uh, so we did the first, we did the, the very first uh, high-end student rental project in Boulder. Um, the projects that I've purchased on Grand Junction are all what I'd consider a, a C minus or D plus asset that were all fairly decrepit. Not all of them, but a lot of them, wouldn't you say? Yeah. And we've, we put some, put a substantial amount of money into those. I mean, I tend to like to have nice projects. Um, it makes my life a whole lot easier. Um, and frankly, from a cash flow perspective and a return perspective. Um, having nicer units, at the end of the day, you make more money and you keep the tenants longer and you have lower vacancy rates. Um, so, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And your intent is to keep these and, and be the owner, not to look for a new buyer of the park in three years.
No, I mean, I have, I have, I have two, two major partners behind me. Um, but uh, no, it's, it's a long-term hold for me. Yeah.
I'm, I, I know that you uh, mentioned that you're over budget right now by about one point two. Um, and obviously there's some unknowns and uncertainties that might come up.
Yep.
Is, is there a number where if you hit that, this project is a no-go or that this doesn't happen?
We're getting close. I mean, we're, I mean, if you, if you compare the return numbers to where they were six, seven months ago, it's, it's, it's bumped up against a, an area where I'm not that comfortable. Um, do we have money if for some reason we run over budget? Yeah, but that's budgeted into the performer. Um, and so going into it, we're, we're close. A- and as I was saying to Anne at the start of this, you know, you spend enough time in these parks, there, there are a lot of good people. And so there's an emotional investment in this for me as well. I mean, you know, this may be the last project, the last big project I do. It'd be nice to to at least at one point in my life, do something where it's like, hey, you did something really nice for some people. Yeah, I make money. Yeah, I'm not, you know. That's what I, you know, that's why I'm doing this. But at the same time, you know, doing something nice uh, for the people of, of these communities is, is a huge added bonus for me personally. So that's, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a, it's a two-tier goal for me now to get this done.
And I, seriously, I think all of us will say we appreciate the uh, the effort going into these, these uh, mobile park homes. I mean, this is a, those, those areas have been an issue and are an issue. And will continue to be an issue until someone decides to invest. So I, I do appreciate that.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thanks for, thanks for hearing me.
And I think from staff's perspective, we're curious if um, you would like to see the proposed city's financial contribution on a future council agenda.
Yes, I think that would be great. I would really like to be part of this and, and make this project happen and um, and have the city at the table. Um, and I think it sounds like a really great opportunity to clean up three of our mobile home parks and provide better, um, safer and nicer conditions for residents.
I think I would love to see a little bit more expansive perhaps even because as you said earlier, our normal investment rate, I guess you could call it in these projects is between seven and twelve percent. And if we have available funding, if we can do a mix of funding between the, the tip funding and uh, unrestricted funds, then I would love to see us explore some of those options as well. Because I think this is a noteworthy and worthy project for us to be involved with. It really ticks boxes on our providing and aiding in affordable housing for Montrose.
Is there an opportunity to do some in-cost stuff to help with any of the parks or landscaping as well? As an idea, you don't need to answer now. I just
We'll look into it, some in-kind work that the city could partner on. We'll look into it.
I think that would uh, be especially interesting since he was even willing to donate those to the city or for a dollar. Um, you know. I, I think that could really be an interesting concept. We can help maybe develop.
It's a conversation well worth having for us because it's an, it's a, something that's going to really elevate the living conditions of Montrose and especially those areas that have been definitely eyesores and blighted area for quite some time now.
I'd be less interested in taking on the ownership of a private park. I know a lot of HOAs maintain some private areas, but more interested in the upfront costs than the long-term maintenance, honestly.
Anything else, Anne?
All right, that does go on to uh, item B, Riverbend RV Park Addition to Annexation. Planner one, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Uh, I have a presentation to share that I'll pull up in just a second. Okay. So as stated, this is the uh, work session overview for the Riverbend RV Park Addition to Annexation. Um, here's the schedule for the project. We plan to have this, have the council resolution to set a hearing date on August third. The planning commission hearing on the eleventh and then bring it back to you for a first and second reading on September seventh and twenty-first. So here's the location map. This parcel is located east of Chappeta Road, uh, west of the Uncle Pogrey River and north of Chappeta Lake. The parcel is approximately zero point two six acres in size. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the Chappeta Water Service, uh, service area and the city sewer service area. Um, this annexation is being done in order to clean up an orphaned strip of land. Uh, the parent parcel was annexed into the city in two thousand nine and the land on almost all sides of the strip are already within city limits. Uh, due to the small size of the parcel, an annexation agreement is not required. Annexation will allow the owner to include the strip into a consolidated RV park property. The surrounding zoning and that of the parent parcel is in the B two highway commercial district. Uh, as well as a small portion of R three medium density district. The B two highway commercial district is intended to provide for business oriented towards serving the motoring public. Since this piece is planned to be consolidated with the surrounding parcels, it makes the most sense to zone at B two as well. And so here's the annexation map. Uh, note that this plat is not what's in the, is, what is, sorry, is not what's in the packet. Uh, this pat, this plat is the final plat. We received it somewhat at the last minute. Uh, so we couldn't get in the packet in time, but it's almost the same. Um, this land is listed as public in the future land use map. This designation is used to suggest potential locations for parks, open space, trails, schools, churches, cemeteries and public buildings. Uh, this piece is located in Growth Area One. This represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow and can be comprised of platted but unbuilt lots, annexed but unplatted land and unannexed small enclaves. Because more than one-sixth of the parcel's borders are contiguous to city limits, the parcel is eligible for annexation. Due to its small size, an annexation impact report is not required. Staff feels that this proposal is consistent with the public health, safety and welfare, city and state annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. And staff will recommend approval of the annexation and of the B two highway commercial district zoning designation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
David, yeah, the one question I have, William, is on uh, I guess it's, we have to look at a page. Twenty-one of our documents on the right of way for the uh, modern trail alignment is to verify that right now where we currently have our trail, do we have all of the access necessary to, for that modern trail alignment to put in that trail down there to Chappeta from the current trail alignment?
Scott, do you want to talk about it? We've been discussing the trail a lot as part of this property.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, William. Riverbend RV, item C, Scott, Scott Murphy.
Part two of that discussion.
Uh, let me screen share here. I have to speak to that. So um, bigger picture, Riverbend RV Park was annexed back into the city, I think in two thousand, something. Uh, I think it's two thousand six or so. It was in that memo. Um, when they did that, they preserved or they had this little strip piece that wasn't annexed. It's got three or four different parcels, kind of, kind of a mess. Um, in that regard, because you have different, same owners, same properties, even individual buildings crossing property lines. Um, and then you had this right of way that was dedicated along the river that we'll be talking about here. Um, the RV park has changed ownership and this new owner is looking to clean all of this up. Um, which is great because it's good for us, good for them, good for the community, um, good for tourism, all that. So um, the, the bigger picture here is they're looking to legitimize the mobile home park permit for, you know, their foreseeable planning horizon, you know, twenty-plus years out. Um, travel home park permit. Yes, is that the proper name? Okay. Um, yeah, I just talked. Um, and uh, uh, really, yeah, set up the, set up the park to um, get beyond some of those current issues that it's, it's currently, not, you know, it's a great park thriving, doing really great, just cleaning up all of the land entitlements and stuff that goes on behind the curtains. Um, so with that, we've been working with them on uh, cleaning up the trail right of way along the river. So let me screen share the picture here, which will help me or help illustrate what we're talking about. Let's just jump to a different PDF, just one second. There we go. Better life through technology. Ah, there we go. So within this screen, you'll see, um, at the bottom here is Chappeta Lake. Um, they dedicated uh, a right-of-way envisioning a future trail along the river from Chappeta Lake up along the river through um, the Riverbend RV Park property, but also a couple neighboring properties connect up to the uh, Uncle Pogrey Riverway Trail that runs along uh, the, the old railroad right-of-way grade there. What we're, what kind of has, their plans have come to fruition. Um, a lot of this area is already somewhat developed. Um, as our repark uh, kind of encumbers the potential for their site. Um, combined with some topography issues here, combined with uh, wetland and other ownership. So we don't have continuous ownership of that trail through there, um, but also the trail length. Um, and so longer range on the, along Chappeta itself. So this is where the trail comes down Chappeta. Um, this is Chappeta Drive here. A couple, you know, bigger, scroll off the screen here. Um, trying to get away from my little, I want to move that out of the way. Okay. Uh, so longer range, uh, the city is looking at a connector trail from Cobble Drive down to Chappeta to help get connectivity from Cobble Creek, um, residents down to the trail itself here. And kind of as a log, logical uh, continuation of that, um, getting people that come down the Chappeta Trail, getting them a more direct uh, access to Chappeta Park. Uh, which is that, you know, the city owns that CPW still manages the stocking of that, but that is a city property. Um, this allows us to do that kind of uh, more intuitively. So a lot of times people may not know to, if they want to get to Chappeta Park, they have to peel off where they all the way up here. Um, but also for people using the system and coming down from this way. Um, they can all come here, um, either connect off of the foot trail there, connect off of this foot trail here. Um, and get down to Chappeta Park where, you know, at that point, it's a little more obvious and intuitive. Another secondary benefit where this is all city property, this is all uh, good parking. And so if people want to park at this end, which has always been a problem, um, there's like one or two parking spaces along here and it gets pretty tight. People can park down here and then connect up to uh, the trail itself. So in order to do that right now, we can't do that. Uh, it's portions of it are on some of these old remnant properties I was talking about. You can see all the different parcels that make up the Riverbend RV Park here. Um, so this is essentially an exchange. So we would be uh, vacating the upland portions of this old right-of-way dedication, which was dedicated to the city. The city didn't purchase it. Um, we're only vacating the upland portion. So it leaves the portions below the ordinary high watermark of the river. Um, in city ownership, which helps us, you know, maintain the parts that do have public benefits. So you think of people either tubing in the river, waiting, fishing, things of that sort. That would still maintain city property for those purposes, but the portions that are of really no use to us would be vacated on the upland portions, so that the bank and the, and the flat areas that have several RV stalls. In exchange for that, we would be getting right-of-way from two different parcels here to essentially legitimize the road access off of Old Chupita Trail. Right now, it's portions of it are somewhat trespassing and allow enough width that that would be the only piece left to allow for a trail connection between the parking lot at Chupita Lake up to the rec trail along the eastern side of Chupita. So that takes form in the shape of a ordinance. So we go through, we have an MOU, which just, there's an MOA, which is memorandum of agreement. This is memorandum of understanding, essentially just outlining the process and that was in your packet. Those are non-binding, so it's really just that, hey, if we do this, you'll do this kind of thing. So kind of like we did the Woodgate Road realignment, right-of-way vacations. We go through, do the ordinance, get that approved, but we're not exposed because we wouldn't record that until they replat this land. Clean up all those parcel lines and dedicate what we need for the right-of-way in exchange for that. And then those get recorded simultaneously. One has to go in front of the other, but within minutes of each other. So that it really just kind of gets everything teed up to have a closing event and, and clean up the property in one, one swoop. Anything I missed? And the reason I'm involved is a lot of times if there's land issues related to right-of-way, that's where our department involves. If you're wondering the distinction between planning and engineering on this.
So Scott, we'll maintain all of our recreational access across that entire stretch of river from the highway all the way, all the way down.
Correct. Yep, for the portions that we already have, yeah, we're not losing anything on the river.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say, good work. I mean, this seems like a real win-win for everybody.
Oh, these guys, I dreamed up how this all works. I just make the drawings.
The presentation is so succinct and it makes so much sense, but it sounds like there was a lot of work in the background to make it happen. Thank you.
Vision of the ducks on the pond, they look so serene. None underwater are going like this. Thanks, Scott. Item D, lease and sublease agreement for 3325 North Townsend Avenue, referred to as the Brown Center. Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate it. Good to see you all today. So today we're going to be considering, City Council is considering lease agreement and sublease agreement for the city-owned building located at 3325 North Townsend Avenue. So in more familiar terms, it's the building right next to the animal control shelter and the water treatment plant. And we're looking to see if City Council desires the lease and sublease at a future council meeting. And staff will place those items on the August 3rd, 2021 City Council Meeting Agenda. So, so for some background, the city of Montrose leases this building to Tuxedo Corn Company LLC. And then Tuxedo Corn Company subleases this space to Montrose Lighthouse. The city entering into an agreement with Tuxedo Corn back in 2018 for a three-year lease agreement. And that lease agreement ends in September 15th, 2021 this year, as well as the sublease. And so the city is a signature on the sublease between Tuxedo Corn and Lighthouse. Just wanted to note that. And what we're doing is we're considering a new four-year lease and a new sublease. And they both have minimal changes. So just as a little bit of background, Tuxedo Corn utilizes the Brown Center as a dormitory for seasonal agricultural H2A workers during the growing season. And then outside of the growing season, White House utilizes the Brown Center as an emergency shelter for the homeless during the winter season. Attached in the memo, you're going to be seeing that red line and clean lease agreement and sublease agreement. But just to highlight some of those main differences, what you're looking at in the lease is that the monthly rate is reduced from $5.90 per month to $10 per month. And this is in line with an amendment that was done back in July of 2019 that reduced the rent from $5.90 to a dollar per month in exchange for Tuxedo Corn, assuming landscaping, maintenance responsibilities and costs. So if you look at the Exhibit B on that lease agreement, you can kind of see what exactly that means. And the, the change that's going to be happening is an increase from $1 to $10 as that is in line with what our city attorney, attorney advises is a standard minimal rate for, for renting or leasing, sorry. Sorry. And so we also are going to notice that there's going to be kind of a change to just boilerplate language, like updated monetary limitations provided by the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act. There's going to be modified liability insurance limits in Section 16. And there is also the addition of language in Section 23 concerning the termination of the lease by the less C. And so that allows for 90 days written notification. If you're looking at the sublease, even smaller amount of changes that are really happening there, there is additional language in Section 4 for compliance with occupancy requirements. Just to make sure that we're following all the different codes when it comes to the amount of people staying. And this is in line with the same policy. That's a part of the lease agreement for H2A workers. Same policy is going to be in place for the, the shelter use as well. And then there's also the addition of language concerning the termination of the sublease by the subless C. Are there any questions?
I just had one question. When it's being sublet in the wintertime, is there any way for us to put any kind of restrictions on folks being housed or being provided with some kind of educational opportunities or mental health assistance in some way?
That's a good question.
We've had that question over the years when we partnered with Haven House years ago. We had council go and do tours of Haven House and we were helping subsidize their rent at the time. Before they were able to pursue some grant opportunities to renovate the building. At that time, council was really excited about the Haven House model where they do provide some wraparound services and some requirements for their tenants to be productive around the facility, whether it's cleaning it up, cooking dinner for each other, going through different types of educational programs. And so we've known over the last several years that that was always not necessarily a requirement, but it's encouraged by the city to incorporate that into the housing. Because we really do think from talking to the community organizations that wraparound services are better than just providing shelter. We've talked about it and I don't want to put Matt on the spot, but we've talked with Stephen in the past about it. But feel free to chime in. It's difficult to put requirements like that on the occupant. But we can strongly encourage it and we can, you know, point them in the right direction, which they, this group knows all the nonprofit organizations that provide those types of services because they've been doing this for quite a long time. But it's definitely something we prefer, we would encourage, but I don't know. And Stephen in the past didn't know of a way we could actually require it. Because that would enter the city into more of the management role over their service delivery. And that puts the city at a little bit of risk and increases our liability.
Just to add on that a little bit, we would also be put in the position of, in addition, monitoring whether or not they're compliant with those conditions. What happens if they're in breach? And what would our remedies, would our remedies be terminating the sublease? If a provider doesn't provide those services pursuant to the sublease and breach of the agreement, whether or not that breach of the material. So it's best to kind of have that preference for it, but not build it into Lisa's requirement.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one other thing real quick. So it's important to keep in mind, we're talking about this as an emergency winter shelter. So when we're having other discussions with nonprofits in the community, the county, a lot of different groups that Ross and, and Anne and others at the city have been talking to recently about long-term permanent supportive housing with wraparound services, something that could be built to provide services for the next 50 years for the homeless and transient populations. That's, I think, where you could have, if you know, a requirement that says if the city donates a million dollars worth of land or $500,000 worth of property, or we put a half a million dollars into the initial startup of a program, we're going to have these requirements. So I don't think that idea is lost. It's just this particular property is emergency winter housing only to keep people from dying out on the street in the winter. So that's different than a long-term approach. We know this is a Band-Aid.
Which actually leads into my, my, sort of my question. In the general provisions, item L, where it's in the red line version, it's added overnight occupancy shall never exceed 30 people. But if this is a dire need emergency shelter, is there a caveat incorporated that allows us to exceed that maximum occupancy in case of an emergency? Or is that a hard number?
Go ahead.
So that situation's come up in the past and on a very short term, they have been able to go over those numbers. But there is fire code to worry about and occupancy limits on the structure itself. And so we don't want to, this is the maximum, but we understand that, and they know as well. Sometimes they just have to house people for a day or two, but then they need to get back. It can't be their norm to exceed the occupancy limits unless they stated that wrong.
Well, that brings up a question you just spoke into earlier. How do we monitor that?
In the past, we have visited the site and, you know, we try to be in regular communication with the operators. And it's really in good faith that they abide by this agreement and we abide by our part as well. But I know Bill and I have gone out there sometimes and other staff as well to verify. But I would say that Lighthouse has been a good partner and they understand the reasons for this requirement as well. And it's just not really conducive to their operating model to exceed it either.
Originally, when we entered into this, we did three years because we weren't sure how it was going to go. I'm assuming, and you just said they've been a good partner, it's gone well. So now we're extending this to four years. Also, we had concerns about landscaping, but then we turned it over to them. And I'm assuming since we're keeping that, that that has gone well as well. Okay.
It has, and there are times when the city helps out. We had, I think, one huge snowfall year, maybe it was 2019 or the winter of 2018 into 2019. And even though Lighthouse typically is responsible for snow removal, the city helped them out. And so of course, we, we do that when we can. And but otherwise, Tuxedo and Lighthouse have complied with the terms of the lease. And it seems to us like right now, with the community talking about additional resources for people who are experiencing homelessness. We know this is like Phil said, a Band-Aid in some ways. But as the community and you continue to partner on those further efforts, it makes sense to us to continue to use the Brown Center in this way in the wintertime.
Well, and to be honest, my concern would be if we put too many stipulations on at the operator or the folks that need to take advantage of that service, maybe discouraged from getting involved.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Russ. Next item is item E. Allocating private activity bonds to CHFA. Community Engagement Specialist, Ross Faldes.
Hello again. So in 2018 to 2021, Shannon Forio from the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority reached out to the city of Montrose to request the city of Montrose to sign its 2021 Private Activity Bond, also known as PAB, Volume Cap to CHAF. And this is in line with what the, what the city has done in the past. So the IRS allocates it for capital bonding authority annually for housing to each state, also known as PAB again, volume cap, volume capacity or cap. Colorado in turn allocates this authority to statewide authorities and local governments. So in 2020, the allocation for the city of Montrose was $1,030,342. And in 2021, the allocation for the city of Montrose is $1,091,612. And so the past three years actually is when the city has assigned our allocation of PAB to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And then CHAF in turn puts it, the PAB to use in the community. And it's taking a variety of shapes. So for example, in 2020, CHAF worked with the city of Montrose to use the city's PAB allocation to support steel, steel properties, LLC's rehabilitation of San Juan apartments. And that's property serves seniors that are 62 years or older, section eight, or residents with disabilities. So city staff again is recommending that the city council consider assigning our PAB allocation to CHAF and request that CHAF use the PAB if, if there is an opportunity to support first-time homeownership, investment, multifamily affordable housing project and/or use the PAB allocation to support CHAF's homeownership program known as First Step. If the city council allocates PAB to CHAF, CHAF will ensure that the funding is used within the city of Montrose to benefit our community. And so something to be clear here is that with this PAB, it's an authorization to issue bonds. It's not a cash value. So it's not like we could either pocket the money or give the money to them. And then with these kind of bonds, you can either issue the bonds, which is something that we could do. But it would be a tremendous administrative burden and there'd be liability there. You can assign it to another local issuer, so another municipality really, if we wanted to. We could assign it to CHAF or we could do nothing and just give it back to DOLA for their statewide allocation. With that, are there any questions?
I think you might have answered this with your last statement, but with these type of funds, is there a use it or lose it? For instance, if there's carry, is there any carryover or is it just a, well, it's kind of one and done?
Right. So if we didn't use it and we didn't allocate it, then we'd have to give it back to DOLA. And you can request for it to carry over for, I think, a period of three years. But that's if we were deciding that we were going to be the issuers.
So by assigning it, we ensure that that won't be the case, that it would, that it's actually been used?
Yeah.
Okay.
And by assigning it to CHAF, that it also guarantees that that money is allocated into Montrose.
Yeah, exactly.
Into the general.
Yep, exactly.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Russ.
Thanks.
Item F, Victim Assistance Law Enforcement Vale Grant Application, Police Chief Blaine Hall.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I come before you today to request authorization for the city of Montrose to file for a victim's assistant law enforcement grant through the Southern Judicial District Victims Assistance Board totaling $28,000. And this $28,000 covers or would cover a portion of our victim's advocate's salary. I might come before you once a year to request authorization to file for this grant. To give you a little bit of background, our victim's advocate's salary is paid through both the Vale Grant and also a federal Victims of Crime Assistance Grant through the federal government. And that comprises the entirety of her salary, except for some overtime. This, or our victim's advocate through the police department is a statutorily required position through the state of Colorado. So it's a position that we have to have and we rely heavily on, on these funds to, to support that position. So with that, I'm, I'm open to answer any questions you may have.
As I recall, I think you and I were on that board at one.
We were on that board at one time a few years ago. Yes.
And the Vale Grant is something that we apply for year after year. And it has become one of those really critical components of our financial program to maintain, maintain that victims advocate, which is a very, very important position within our, our police.
It is, it's statutorily required, but I think that's the, the basics of it. Chantel not only assists victims in our community right now, or excuse me, last year, our stats were about 28,000 incidents. But we also loan her out on occasion to AWAFA, to agency south of us when they, when they need her. So she's, she does a good job. It's a very critical position.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is City Council Discussions. David, do you have anything? You don't have anything? Oh my goodness. Anthony? All right.
I, I sent an email out the other day referring to the UVA and then how we, how that's handled. And I'm just curious, so for future knowledge, when, when we have someone who wants to talk to us or to share information and they also owe us a report on kind of how things are going, how does, how do we initiate the dialogue to get them to come in and actually report and share what, what's going on?
Usually.
Usually they'll, they will have been working with staff members on whatever that project is. In this case, uh, you know, the daycare situation, childcare issue. So um, the staff members, when they hear that the project's complete and ready to go, then we'd reach out to Lisa or Michaela and the clerk's office and get that set up for a future work session topic to come back and and share that. Sometimes uh, well, we always run that by the mayor. And sometimes the mayor will um, depending on who it is and how they like to proceed, sometimes they'll ask for it to go to a regular city council meeting rather than a work session. Uh, just because there's more of an audience out in the community uh rather than our work session. So that's preference of the mayor and city council. But that's usually the process uh to do that. In this particular case, I think we saw some emails come back from from the group and their study might be done and ready to ready to go. And they had asked, I think, individual council members to attend from what I was reading on the emails. And so my my uh thoughts when I responded was rather than you know, put yourself in a situation where you're each agreeing to go individually and you're going to this outside meeting. And we'd need to make sure we don't forget to post it as a quorum that may as well just have them come back to a city council meeting on this topic to see what what they came up with.
And we have um Rastal does is reaching out to UVA on this particular one to invite them to a work session. And so can either go directly through a staff member that you know is working or like Bill, I think, said, Lisa Del Piccolo as well can coordinate that for you.
I'd like to point out that there are a number of other times when we, as council, are invited to the, hey, why don't you all drop by kind of things? And we love doing that. But we also have to be very careful not to make an accidental quorum at an event. So there are some times where you might not get all of us there. But the intent is there for us to really support like the Bicycle Alliance. Um, kind of reception was a, it's a great opportunity. It's a great program, but you might not see all of us there because we're trying very hard to not accidentally quorum.
Have to actually leave and take turns.
Yeah, when speaking of the water tower, I think that was a great job that the staff did. And I think the turnout was exceptional on it. I I think that's a, maybe that'll take a little heat off of Scott Murphy. I I try not to mention his name too often, but.
I did get a few questions that I I didn't know the answer to because you haven't told us yet. How do they paint it with it being so big and tall? And the it being the water tower in this case, it was a great open house.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That was uh, I was excited to see that many people excited to geek out about a tank. Um, I think we had probably five hundred people, maybe that came throughout the duration. It was pretty solid. So um, so the painting process is pretty, there's a lot of layers. Um, so initially what they see now is a great, a green primer. Um, that's on the outside of the tank and then the inside is just bare steel. Uh, they'll sandblast that. So for anybody who came to it, that little black stuff on the ground was sandblasting media. Uh, they sandblast to get the mill scale off, get down to bare metal. And then they reprime within a day of that before it redeveloped because just the humidity in the air is enough to compromise the coating. These are pretty specialized coatings, obviously for water and sanitation purposes. You don't want VOCs coming into your water. Um, uh, but also for durability. Once these tanks go into service, they're in service for thirty to fifty years um, before they're recoded. So um, once they do that, that you know, they get the primer on right away. And then there's uh, three different coats, I think, on both interior and exterior to get up to about twenty mils of thickness. Um, so you'll see a couple of different colors. They do each layer is a different color because they need to be able to know what's been painted and what hasn't as they work through the layers. So if you see a weird off color, it's because it was on sale or something and and they got a good price on it. But um, that's not the final color. The final color is is that uh kind of um off-white, kind of adobe-ish type color. Um, they do that physically. So for people that were in there in the tour, um, they actually hang, it's a scaffolding off of the roof. Um, just like a window painter does. Uh, so they have a little winch on that that moves them up and down. On the outside, similar program, they're hanging off of anchors on the top of the tank. And then they roll up and down the tank. It's got little wheels on it and are able to just kind of paint it in stripes vertically um as they go. Uh, you know, there's been talk about some artistic effects and things. Um, if we do go down the road, that road is as a community project later. Um, the coating that is going on right now needs to be on either way. Um, again, it's a specialized coating to protect the steel. And so that would be on as a base coat, no matter what the tank looks like in the future. So um, we're moving forward with that now and then uh may look at if if people are interested in something artistic later, um, kind of starting that discussion. But does that answer your question in a really long way? So, thank you.
So you weren't going to paint it like a barber pole after all?
We got some good ideas actually at the, we should have put up a bet for the best name and the best painting idea. Uh, Manion's Barber Pole. Uh.
I like the idea of painting it like a rocket ship. I thought that was.
Yes, yeah. SN sixteen, so it'd be your Elon Musk starship, American flag, um, or something. Yeah, anyway, so I should have made a contest out of it, but um, next time.
Thank you, Scott. Any other staff comments? Mark, Pat? Bill? Janey? Well, in that case, we'll adjourn for the day. Thank you.